Okay, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon session for November 16th. We're going to move right on into our agenda. Our first one is an action item to set future county commissioner meeting dates for January, February, and March. Everybody have a chance to look at their calendars?
January 18th is Martin Luther King Day. So we will have that one off.
So we'll do it on the 19th?
On the 19th. And then there's only four weeks in that month. And February 15th is Lincoln's Birthday, President's Day. So that one will be on the 16th.
16th?
There's only four of that one, probably so. And then March, there's five Mondays. Maybe you guys may plan this anywhere the week of spring break, and do you know when that is yet?
It's usually in the last week in March. That'd be my preference is to skip that one if we could.
So let's skip the 29th?
So the 22nd is probably the week of spring break, but he leaves after or something. I think we'll skip the 29th also.
That work?
That work?
Okay, so the 29th comes off. Get them, Doug?
I did. Mr. Sheriff, would you mind making a motion just so it is an action item to set the commissioner dates?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we set up the commissioner dates for January 4th, 11th, 19th, and 25th. February to be the 1st, the 8th, 15th, and the 22nd.
Or even 16th.
I'm sorry, yeah, 16th. Yep, that's President's Day, isn't it? 16th and the 22nd, and for March, it'll be the 1st, the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Move in second, all in favor of PCI? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is an action item, discussion and decision on the courthouse COVID procedures. And I had Gabby add this to the agenda last week to talk about how everybody feels about where we are now and what we should be planning for in the future. As you guys know, the COVID thing is kind of exploding. Do we want to go back to alternating weeks, letting half the employees go home? Take turns, what? That's what we're here for, is figure out how we can keep this place going and keep everybody healthy. Any ideas? Pat?
Well, I have ideas, but I kind of like hearing from everybody else. Go left.
Could you go first?
Mine. I'll go first.
Yeah, I, you know, I've been trying to stay on top of it and research everything that's going on, and I probably have to take this off.
There you go.
Yeah. Been a little bit affected personally. My husband was exposed with a student. Both were wearing masks the whole time, but he had to quarantine for two weeks. So the masks do work. He didn't get sick. But, you know, we still have to be careful. So with that in mind, I think the fewer people that we have in the courthouse, the better. If there's a way that we could stagger schedules, that would really help. I also really feel that we should do appointment only for our buildings, at least while we are in this category that we are now. From November 6th until November 13th, we went from 157, 156 cases in Valley County, not the whole county, to 188. So that was like a week. We know it's exploding. We do have people that have been either exposed or are now positive as far as employees go. So we're starting to get it within the county as well. The county is the employer. So with that, the fewer exposures we have, the better. So if we do appointment only for the public, I know they're going to hate it, because they always do, but it's for our protection as well as theirs, and we have to take care of our employees, so. And if we don't have employees, we can't offer them services. So kind of, you know, we are taking care of them, and we know we can do it, so.
Yeah, we did it in one March.
March, yeah.
March.
It's possible.
The thing that I'm concerned about is it's going to take a couple of months of this schedule.
I know.
And we've got holidays, and people are going to be exposed during holidays and
I know.
All that kind of stuff. And I want everybody's idea
Yep.
And how we can get through this.
The other thing that I'd really highly, highly recommend, and, you know, I'm not going to be a masked police. Nobody of us, no one of us should be, except for our supervisors. But in the offices, it's so natural to be just working away, and then you think, oh, I have to ask Sheri a question. Walk over to Sheri, and neither one of us have a mask on. So now, you know, if I was exposed two days ago, now I'm contagious, and I've given it to Sheri. So that's my concern. And so while we're, you know, on the public record, I just want to say, be careful with that. You know, if you have to get up and go talk to a coworker, make sure you put your mask on. So they do work. That's, yeah, that's my recommendation is to appointment only, and then do a more skeleton or half the people in the courthouse at a time, kind of like we did in March, or whenever it was, April, May, whenever we came back.
And don't you think we'd have to leave that kind of undetermined when we're going to come off that to see what happens with the disease itself?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or when vaccinations come out, and we have those available to us.
Available to everybody, yeah.
I think that's going to be a while, but.
I don't, I don't know. It may be sooner rather than later, so.
And anybody else? Come on, you guys.
Of your opinions. You guys are the ones who are
How are you going to run your office?
Come on, you're wearing a mask. We won't even know who you are. It's totally anonymous.
Well, I'm concerned in my office, there's just two attorneys. So if both of us get sick, you know, that's a really significant impact. So I think we need to stagger so that we're not seeing. So I, you know, like the treasurer's office is that way. They're a small office, planning and zoning, you know. I think that all those small offices, I'm really concerned about that. Because if you lose a staff of two, I mean, that's all you've got in planning and zoning. And so you're going to be down for 14, you know, 14 days at least with that. So I really do think that we probably need to go back and take a look at staggering our employees in and out of the courthouse.
Okay, June?
I agree, we need to start staggering. I even had a thought, but I don't know how popular it'll be. Seven days a week. Because my people can come in and work weekends, and that way I can stagger people. But I don't know if that would be a countywide thing or not, but we definitely need to try to stagger these hours. I've already got one out that's going to be out for 14 days. And we're trying to get remote, get her remotely working so that she doesn't have to use her entire 14 days. She's not sick. She's just been exposed. So it's a real concern. I like the appointments. We can do that with the DMVs. We had that appointment that we were able to set up and get that going. I don't think it's something we can do overnight, but we have, we have a program for it. And we could even do that with the McCall DMV. I'm very concerned about those ladies up there. They do not have the luxury of the deputy at the door, and they get lineups, and you all know the problems that we've had. I had to send a deputy up there to help them so that they could get closed. And people can get a little abusive. There's no reason for that. So if we went to appointments, they could keep their door closed and just make it known. But we would have to give, we would have to give the public ample notice. And I could stagger my staff with no problem. Again, I said seven days a week probably isn't a real popular thing, but I could have some people work three days, some people work four days. Depends on if they want to do tens or not. It's just a thought. So we need to do something. It's, it's getting a little scary.
Well, I would assume that if you're behind in your department, then working Saturdays or Sundays is part of life.
We're always behind.
We're always behind.
We can't seem to get caught up. We do, we are bringing on a new appraiser in two weeks, finally. We will have a semi-full staff, but now we've got one that's going to be gone clear until probably the end of February. She's out. So we're short in our front office again. Sue Probst is working, but she can only work 19 hours a week. So we've got her working Mondays and Fridays all day. So we're trying.
So can they work remotely?
I'm going to talk to David about that and see who we can get set up to do some remote work. We did that last time, and Sue Lieber did work remotely last time. It's, it's difficult. It can be done, but it is difficult. That would be a choice that I think we'd have to discuss within our office and see how it's going to work. I do have, I do have some employees that have small children at home. And if they're not going to have daycare or something, remote working might be for them too. I don't know. We'll, we'll have to.
Well, I think it'd be up to the elected official of the department has to schedule it and make it work.
Yeah.
But to do as best you can to protect everybody.
We have to protect them.
Okay?
Okay.
Sheriff?
We obviously have some divisions that
Can't.
Can't go, you know, unstaffed, dispatch the jail, and then calls for service. So have to do claims and could go back to appointments only, driver's license. And the guys could just, you know, traffic enforcement unless it's really something egregious that would be, you know, visible or need be.
I'm assuming a lot of everybody would be on call for any major, major events?
Yep.
Especially patrol?
So, but that's about all we can.
Yeah, there's some departments that's going to be hard to do.
It is. It's, we're going to have to limit traffic back into dispatch again, just so that no one gets sick up there.
Well, I really like the appointment only kind of a thing, because then we can control how many people come in here at one time. I think that's something we need to look at. Okay, Doug?
I'll be honest, I haven't had time to really take a look at how our office would function. I do believe that it's something that we need to take into consideration. I think initially, we would do appointment only for all type of services that the clerk's office has to offer to individuals. So at this point in time, that's probably the only decision that we will be making is requiring the general public to make appointments with our office for services. And then we'll discuss it internally about what we're going to do regarding staggering of employees.
Okay, Annette?
We can.
Yeah. Probably's got to hear you.
We can stagger. We've kind of talked about it already. If it, if it happens, you know, somebody can go on inspection, somebody can be in the office. We can, we've slowed down. I can work, I can do some plans at home. We'll make it work, whatever we got to do.
Well, just, you know, you guys have figured out each department, make it work. Going to take a lot of communication with your fellow employees and let them know. The worst case scenario is if we get it throughout the building and it sends all of us home for two weeks, then it's going to be a real challenge.
Yeah, we can make it work.
David?
I agree with that, and we pretty much have to do whatever everybody else wants to do. So whatever everybody decides, that'll kind of determine what we do. But we can work remotely entirely.
And if you got everything else pretty well set up
Yeah.
For other folks to go remote.
Yeah, last time we had cameras or webcams that we ordered that were, took four or five months to get in place, but we have those in place now. And I think we have enough laptops at least to initially get going with a dozen people working remotely or something like that.
So I'm assuming we'll kind of phase this in through the rest of this week, and then maybe kind of start a hard date next week?
Yeah, whatever you want. I think we're, we're ready to go.
You're ready to go now?
Yeah, like within a day or something like that. The software that we have, Office 365, will be in a much better place, space in a month, where every type of data we need to store, we'll be able to store, including CJ's covered data. So people, even if they didn't have a laptop, or even if they didn't have remote access, they'd still be able to access a lot of tools they need, as far as email, sharing documents.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
But generally, the less exposure is better.
Kathleen? Jody?
We cannot close. We've got taxes. We're sending out next week. And once that starts, last year, we were down a person, and we worked seven days a week in our office, with three of us. So there's, we're finally got four. We'll limit our, you know, our exposure among ourselves to an extent, but it's everyone's envelopes and money, and we're still at the mercy of getting taxes through, through December.
If you get sick, and there's two or three of you going?
Honestly, we're probably going to have to come in and work through it unless you're, you're sick enough. I mean, once we're exposed, we're exposed. I don't know. I, we can't take people's checks home. I can't run people's payments from home, so we've got to come in. And two people at a time trying to run, I mean, we're talking, we've got over 24,000 parcels we're sending out next week. So once money comes in, we can't take checks home and impulse from home, so we've got to come in. And we'll keep it as clean as we did when we came back to work in May. We sprayed stuff down, we kept our desks clean, doorknobs, you know, the area as clean as we can. But there's just no way of shutting down, not through December.
Yeah, this is a tough time of year for tax drives. So guys, you just have to be extra vigilant on all that stuff. And do you guys have rubber gloves or gloves to handle all that mail with?
No, we've all got, we all make, as we're going, you know, we keep our hands, we keep sanitizer at all our desks, and we've got disinfectant wipes there in the office. We're still set from, you know, earlier in the year. We've kept that, we've all kept that through the year. Flu season's coming up. Forget if Corona wasn't here, flu season's coming up, and we're dealing with all that every year. So we're extra careful in December when it comes to taxes anyways.
Do you know, when you guys send out your tax notices, is there a thing on there that people can pay online?
Yes, yes. And we, we push as many people as we can who call and let them know. It's, there's a 2.5% charge, but it's definitely something option, and.
Maybe we need to waive that fee.
Yeah, I was just thinking, maybe we need to drop that fee and encourage that. We'd have to eat, eat the difference, but I don't think we're talking too much, are we?
Well, 2.5%.
Isn't that Access Idaho? Yeah, it's not a county thing. That's Access Idaho. That's the credit card company.
So they would have to drop the fees. We can't, we can't ask. Can we ask for it?
It doesn't seem to get for providing that service.
Well, that's not going to work. Anyway, I guess just try and encourage people to pay online if they can. That's how we do all of our bills. Everything's online. Okay, Cynda?
I'm extremely busy right now. I hadn't actually given it any thought. I'll work with maybe, I don't know, we'll figure it out. But if you tell us we're going to go back to what we were doing before, I guess that's what we'll do. Maybe I'll work four days and Lori can work one day or, or something. But my, you know, if I get a computer, then I can check emails if I went home or, you know, for a day. But if we do that again, are the people that are staying at home, are they actually staying at home? Or are they going to go?
That's the caveat of this, is that if you're going to stay home or go home, stay home and don't expose yourself to the public. It's really hard to do. I know it's hard to do, especially if you have daycare and all that stuff. You don't want somebody, your kids or whatever, bringing it back home to you. But if you're out running around town, when you're supposed to be home, that does not look very good for me, anyway. And you guys need to take this serious. This is a lot more serious than people are giving it credit. A lot more. There's a lot of long-term effects to it that they don't even know, so. How do you two guys feel? Are we ready for this step yet?
We need to take back our public hearings to Zoom only and get people. I'm sorry.
We don't have Zoom. We've never had Zoom meetings.
So basically, you just did not have P and Z meetings then?
We had P and Z meetings, but we've, we filtered them in one at a time.
When we were closed before?
Huh?
When we were closed before? Or they were just all online? I mean, maybe not Zoom, but they just called in. We had a time where no one was live in the courthouse.
Well, we canceled the one P and Z meeting. And then after that, they came in six feet apart.
You may want to just cancel December then. Honestly, I think if we take this back for
The whole, the whole meeting? That would be a time. I mean, I can't, I, at your direction, I will postpone the entire December meeting.
I think that's probably wise, if we don't have the ability to do some kind of an online Zoom meeting.
You've already had a meeting for this month?
Yeah.
What do you have next month? Is there quite a bit on the agenda?
Oh, a handful of things.
So I think that's your call. That's, to me, that's every department's call. If you're getting behind on your work, you need to come in and keep up with it. Can't get behind, or then we're going to be like in jury trials, where it's going to be forever catching up. But this is not just a ticket where you can go home until Christmas and not do anything. Everybody's got a job, and you got to get it done. But I'm, what I'm trying to push is that if there's two people in your department, you should not be mixing with each other. One of, somebody's got to stay home, and somebody's got to go to work. Same thing in all the other departments. Don't sit next to each other, and we can't.
If we're not going to have employees in the building, if we're asking them to stay home, I think that we don't have the public in the building. Unless it's with an appointment only. So I think Cynda cancels the December meeting. And if that allows her and Lori to split their time a little more effectively, then that's what we need to do.
But if, if you get caught up and you have time for a December meeting, then I think that's your fault. Because we don't want to slow the progress down, but we just want to be smart in how we do it.
I don't think there's anything extremely important down there right now.
Okay?
Well, on the 23rd, my apologies for interrupting. We have a public, two public hearing scheduled. Do you want to, commissioners, do you want to continue with those?
What are those on?
Those are amendment for Title IX for a minimum of one acre, and then the snowmobile ordinance.
Those are both important, but I think we can do those online. We just have people call in. They just don't need to be here physically present.
Why can't P and Z do call-ins like that as well, Cynda?
We can. It's, it's very difficult for applicants to do their presentation over the telephone.
But I think you could still bring the applicant in and even the appellant, but you can't have 25 people sitting behind one or the other during the meeting. If they want to come in and, and say something, then you'll have to do like we did before, where one, one comes in and the other one goes out, and you spread people out. I think that's still okay.
Right, but the, the decision to cancel in December was to free up some time so that Lori and I could also space a little better. Otherwise, we both need to keep working to get it processed.
Now, the next question I have for you is if they come out with a vaccine, when? January, February? Is everybody willing to take it?
Absolutely. I think that's, can we ask that in a public meeting? I think there's some.
Again, I just want people to think about that, because we're already, I'm already hearing from the medical side of things that they're not going to take this shot. They want us to make sure other people take it first, see how it goes. And this could be, this could get down to that wire, is what I'm trying to say, is that you're either going to have to get the shot, or you may not have a job. I know I can't say that, but that's what other folks are saying in the, in different industries. So keep that in mind. It's just a little shot. Okay? What do you guys want to do?
I do have a question.
And for the record, you can't make people do it. There are other reasons that, that would prevent them from doing it. But so the people that have to go home, if they don't have the ability to remote work, what are we going to do if they're paid? Are we going to make them take PTO? What are you going to pay them? That's another thing you guys have to talk about, but.
Well, according to David, everybody should have some way to keep working online. Yeah, do online.
And that's why can the elected officials find out who can work remotely and who can't. And those that can work remotely, those should be your ones that are staying at home. The others should be present, if need be, so.
I was thinking too. We can break that up pretty easily. Like, there's definitely people who need to be in the courthouse and other parts of the county, and there are definitely people who can work at home. So we set up our
And I think we, and we could take turns, so that folks get a break. You can't stick it all on one employee of each department to be here all the time.
Well, if people are working remotely, they should be working. So, I mean, no one should have to do more than their job. It's just whether their job can be done remotely or not. So, I mean, obviously, the girls at the DMV that are going to have to set up appointments have to be here when their, you know, appointments are here.
Same thing with deputies, same thing with dispatch.
Yeah.
Sounds like same thing in treasurer's office. Got to have to be here. I, like I said, I'm trying to figure out a way to keep us going and keep everybody healthy, so. That's the issue.
I agree. I mean, we are the prime example, except to tell everybody, you don't know that you were infected for two days. So you are infecting everybody around you for the two days before you ever have a symptom. So that's why it's important to wear your mask when you're with someone in your office, because you don't know until it's too late. That's the disease itself. And it hits everybody differently, you know? Yeah, we three made it through okay. You know, who knows what the long-term ramifications will be? We don't know that yet. But it hits everybody differently. So just looking at people around you and saying, well, it isn't that bad, isn't a good response, because there's too many people that are dead and that are sitting in ICE right now and Boise to make that statement. So, you know, we do need to try and protect everyone that we can. And I think that we do anything we can to help that. So if you can work remotely, I think that we need to promote that. I think we need to go back and keep as many people out of the courthouse building as we possibly can, and that means appointment only. Shove people to the online portal as much as we possibly can. And we try and help each other through this. Jody, if you need help, I'm happy to come in and help the treasurer's office. I can't get it, you know, not right now, anyway. I've got a banking background. I'm happy to come and help with me. So.
I can slid envelopes, but that's about topping my ability right there.
I can talk with Gabe. I live close enough, but if we needed to, I can come in, you know, closer to closing and work nights and, you know, stuff like that. I don't live that far away. We have someone else who lives up in Donlin. Her coming in at night is just not, not in the winter time. It's not a feasible thing, so.
No.
I'll have, you know, Gabe's got some stuff to think about and see what he wants to do.
Okay, so I would entertain the motion then that we begin immediately the procedures for COVID safety and go to the alternate workers in your department by appointment only. And David said we're ready to go, so if you need a computer to do this, get with David or IT and, and take care of yourselves when you're out in public. Like Sheri said, this is not a fun thing to go through. So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any more discussions? Any more questions?
Does it start today?
Uh, we can start tomorrow. How about we start tomorrow, since it's halfway through today? Okay, starting tomorrow. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, guys, be in communication, take care of each other, take care of your employees, your department, and work together. We got to get through this.
So we probably need an email from the commissioners? Do you want to do that?
Okay. It's next. We're already late, aren't we? Sorry, June. Come on up. Our next item on our agenda is an action item. We have three cancellations. This time, we'll turn it over to June. This time, we'll turn it over to June.
Okay, so all three of these cancellations are park models that they came in and licensed at the last minute. So cancellation number 14 is for parcel MHC 04400060100. The market value on this park model was $31,295. I'm requesting that entire amount of $31,295 to be canceled.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve cancellation of parcel number 14 for $31,295.
One second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. You can bring them up when, at the end, June.
Okay, cancellation number 15. It's a park model also, MHC 04830080090. Market value to be canceled, $33,968.
I move that we approve the cancellation of number 15 for $33,968.
One second?
Second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, cancellation number 16. This market value is a little bit more. It is a park model. It's $54,703.
Yeah, I think for the whole amount?
$54,703 is the amount to be canceled.
I'll make a motion that we approve cancellation number 16 for $54,703.
One second.
Move to second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that's a total value cancellation of $119,966.
It hits the city of Plac State rather hard.
Dang it. Are this the last of them or is it gonna be?
I hope so. They still have.
A week?
What Monday and November?
Then you watch. The state'll change their mind this winter and they'll all go back on the rules next year.
That'd be fine. We'll be more happy tomorrow.
Yep.
That's probably needs to be added to the action.
Our latest problem with our conversion for the general is the money that we get for registration of park models as a Summit County right now.
Oh, great.
So Kathy caught that and sent an email and told them that the assessor of Valencio is expecting that money to be refunded to the county.
Yeah. How long did they say it's gonna take?
I don't know. We haven't gotten a response back yet.
Did you send us what the current best part?
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move right on to our next agenda item is an action item. It's the Flex Plan Adoption Agreement, HR Director Pat.
Yeah, I sent that out to everybody. So I'm trying to get people to stay home if they're sick.
So Doug, can we add to the agenda for next week, the approval on the sick leave for the COVID? So we can have a discussion and have a chance to look at that again?
Would you mind sending me an email just to make sure that was the?
Well, because that policy was approved. The emergency sick leave policy was approved way back in.
Pat, is this the 475 plan?
This is one section, 125 plan. It should have been in your, your packet. I do have a copy here if you need it, but it should have been in your packet. Unless it got missed because of the cancellations and everything. Um, it's a section 125 plan adoption agreement. We do this every year. It just says that we are continuing on with our medical reimbursement account, I mean, our Flex Plan. Uh, this year, one of the things that IRS is now allowing us to take over-the-counter medicines and drugs from our medical reimbursement account or medical health FSA, whatever you call it. And so we also have to sign this, and it needs to all be signed by you all, so.
And this is a $50 renewal?
Yeah, that's pretty, that has been that way since we started with NBA.
That's $5 per participant.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you thought it then.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody good with this?
I hope so. And we are getting more and more people using it, which is exciting. So I think this year we have, I'm trying to remember what the bill is, but I think we have about 12 or 14. And it just keeps going up every year. Because the beauty of this plan is that if you have to pay for the out-of-pocket, of course, you're deductible. You may as well do it pre-tax and sort of keep telling people.
Are we HSA compliant?
Uh-uh.
Oh. I need to revisit what I'm doing.
No, our plan, if you're on our plan, you're not eligible for an HSA.
Nope.
So.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the Flex Plan.
I move that we approve the Flex Plan.
Second, ma'am.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see if you got 11 or 12 right now in this?
Oh, yeah. 14. I don't know. But there's two prices inside. There's that one and then that other one.
I'm not put on camera, so I'm thinking. And when do we have to sign up for this file?
The medical health, that one? Uh, December 5th, I think. And you can do it electronically.
Let's prove the other one is Pat right here. Company.
He's assigned it. I can fill out all the other stuff.
Oh, sorry.
Here's my agenda for. How is McCall to hell there's? Are they're just?
We have that.
We will have.
Pat, I'm gonna let you mark this box.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Final plot's interesting. I think final plot. We could do that. Some of these, I think.
Okay. We're gonna move right on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. It's Resolution 20-2, transfer of funds from General Fund Reserve to various General Fund accounts. Doug sent that to you. Should have it in your packet. Basically, correct me if I'm wrong here, Doug, but this is kind of to cover accounts that went over last year?
That's correct.
So the total is what, about? Oh, I see. That's of all of those. So where are we, the worst of buildings and grounds? That was from all the outside work?
That's correct, and some COVID-related expenses.
Which hopefully will get reimbursed.
We have been reimbursed.
Everybody understand this?
That'll look great for all of the building issues we had last year.
Yep.
Outside stuff.
Mold room. Forgot about that old mold room. That we fixed. So I'd entertain a motion then for this transfer.
I'll make a motion that we allow the transfer of funds from the General Fund Reserve to cover various General Fund accounts.
One second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye. Will y'all sign this? Okay, and then the next resolution is 20-3. This is to provide for the accumulation of the 911 fees.
Or is it anything specific or just back to the general fund? But does it go to a specific line item, the 911 fees?
It goes, uh, we, we have a revenue line in the general fund where those monies from the trust go into the general fund revenue specifically for this.
Okay, but then are they expended in the sheriff's department?
Dispatch.
Dispatch.
If you look at the second page, it provides a breakdown of what's reimbursable.
Oh, got it. Missed that one, sorry. I saw the page one.
So on the last column is the allowable reimbursement amount. And then you also have the ability for wages and benefits from the director of the IT department. We used to do the dispatch supervisor, but the sheriff made a decision this year not to transfer, not to reimburse for her salary and benefits.
Jack, who wants to make this motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2103 with the transfer of 911 funds in the amount of $145,703.
Second, ma'am.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
So is that the total then in that line item, the 145?
That's what we'll be transferring into the general fund revenue.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there any additional revenue in those 911 funds?
No, uh, let me refer you.
So that zeros it out basically?
Well, it moves from the trust into general fund revenue.
And that is the full balance of the trust?
No, the trust currently is at $487,000. Wait, hang on one second. Let me make sure that's the right one. It's currently at $487,000 and then minus the 147.
So the rest of those trust funds are being saved for?
Future projects moving, potentially moving over to the EOC building. But yeah, they are dedicated funds that can only be utilized for 911 services.
Okay.
Can we use that, Doug, to build that room over there?
That would be, I don't, I don't believe so, but that would be a question for sheriff.
That would be a good winter's project to get started on that room. Okay, now, being the time and the place, I need a motion to go into executive session per ad hoc code 742061D for consider records that are exempt from disclosure.
Okay, make a motion and then we go into executive session per ad hoc code 74-2061D.
Second.
And move to second by real call, please.
Mark nine.
Mark nine.
That's Brooke I. So Doug, we're in right at 1:45. We'll turn the cameras off.